Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Here.
Alderman Jacob?
Here.
Alderman Masina?
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Here.
Alderman Sizbarski?
Here.
Alderman Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Woods?
Here.
Mayor Police?
Here. I declare, quorum present, please stand and join in Pledge of Allegiance. And Alexander, come on and lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Need a motion to approve the City Council minutes of May 21st, 2015?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, corrections, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under Communications, do any citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda? I have no written communications. Under Mayor's report, I have a couple of items. I would like to call Alexander Stitchin up, please. Before I read the resolution, Alexan-- Alexander just became an Eagle Scout, and there was a project he had to do to become an Eagle Scout. I'll let him give a brief.
I did a re-landscaping project at St. Charlesboro Mayo Church, and we redid the whole garden area for the parish.
Eagle Scout Alexander T. Stitchin. Whereas the Boy Scouts of America is a vital force in the development of our youth through its many programs which encourage the ability of its members to do things for themselves and especially for others. And whereas one of the major objectives in the scouting program is to develop citizenship through community involvement, and in addition to working for citizenship, merit badges, scouts are encouraged to participate in community service projects. And whereas Alexander T. Stitchin is a member of the Boy Scouts of America and has not only proven himself to be an outstanding member, but has attained the highest honor bestowed on a scout, the Eagle Scout Award. Whereas the Eagle Scout Award is a distinction that will follow him throughout life and will be a beacon to others of the leadership quality and commitment this young man has shown. Now therefore, I, Mayor Anungeto Police, recognize Alexander T. Stitchin as worthy of this highest honor and encourage him to continue in his commitment to excellence. Congratulations. And just so everybody realizes, to become an Eagle Scout, only 5% of scouts actually become an Eagle Scout. 5% out of, you know, what was it, 50 million scouts, was it? Out of 50 million scouts, only the 5% have made it. And Alderman Wesley, you had a comment before I called the chief?
Yes, I have a question. Are you going into landscape business now? We need help.
I'd like to call Chief Vestal, please.
Alex, as the police department, we always like to recognize our Eagle Scouts in town. I think it's a credit to the scout organization in town. There really seems to be a lot of young men that stick with the program and fulfill through. And I know it's not just the one project, but many years of dedication, and what we see is they becoming the future leaders, and no doubt that you'll be a success in whatever you do in the future. So, with that being said, we'd like to present a certificate of achievement to you, and hopefully you'll display it proudly, and congratulations on your achievement.
Did you want to take a picture? You're good. Took all the pictures on Sunday? And if I'm not mistaken, Alexander was the 63rd Eagle Scout in Troop 65.
Very good.
Mayor, does the-- does the scout leaders have something to do with this because we're getting so many Eagle Scouts?
Those two gentlemen, Mr. Zoller and Mr. Wagner, have been scout leaders, I know they said it, let's say, between the two of them, over 25 years?
Over 100 years.
Over 100 years as scout masters?
Well, I'd like to give credit to the leaders, too.
Would you gentlemen please step up? They'd like to.
I've been affiliated with Troop 65 for about 15 years. The first six or so, I was an assistant scout master. Rich was the scout master at the time. And then, the next seven, I was the scout master of the troop. And I've done most of the high adventure trips that we've gone on, the bike trips, hiking the Grand Canyon, Philmont in New Mexico, canoeing in the Boundary Waters, whitewater rafting, you name it. So, it's been a fun run.
I started with Troop 65 in 1985, and for, on and off, I've been scout master three times for 20 some odd years. And this is my final goodbye. I'm leaving soon, and I'm very proud of all of our Eagle Scouts. I've been very fortunate to be able to be part of the lives of 43 Eagle Scouts, and all of their names are up on that board, and I'm very proud of all of those men. I'm proud of every scout we've ever had that have come through Troop 65. It is one of Wood Dale's true treasures. We have been around for 64 years, since 1951, and that has, chain has never broken. And there have been some great things that we have been able to accomplish, and we've had some tremendous recognitions to the point where there was even a book written about Troop 65. So, I'm very fortunate to have been with this organization for a long time, and I thank the community for the support that you have given us. It has meant a lot to the lives of an awful lot of young men. So, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Alderman Wesley, yes, sir.
I'd like to thank you for the things you do for the kids. I know that you don't get paid for it, and your pay is for the kids?
Oh, we do get paid.
Oh, you do? Okay. Not enough, I'm sure?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, right, accomplishments. And I'm speaking, I hope I'm speaking on behalf of the city here that we appreciate what you do, and thank you for what you do, the endless work that you guys do, too. So, thank you very much.
No, it's okay. I asked them before the meeting if they liked to come up, and they denied. So, since you put them on the spot, we brought them up. Next, I'd like to call Barb McCauley from the Chamber of Commerce up here. We have the four of the scholarship recipients here this evening, and Barb will read their autobiography. And we'd like to, as we call your name, if you could please come up?
This year, we heard teachers, administrators, and counselors all say that there was something special about the class of 2015. I went to three different high schools and heard it every time. In addition to their classes, which in some cases were daunting on their own, they managed to participate in a variety of extracurricular activities, excelling in athletics, special interest clubs, and school elective endeavors. Most still made time to reach out and contribute to causes and projects that had meaning for them. An extraordinary bunch of kids, the class of 2015. That always makes me cry. We'd like to take this time to recognize the recipients of the 2015 City of Wood Dale, Wood Dale Chamber of Commerce Combined Scholarship Program. From Fenton, first Sarah Patterson. Sarah has the-- now, you've got to stay up here. All right. Sarah has a class rank of one. She obviously strives to excel. Active in the National Honor Society as well as Student Council, Sarah also worked on the school newspaper and played soccer. Her community service includes Relay for Life, Project Care, and she was a Red Cross Blood Drive Coordinator. Sarah will be attending the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign and plans to become a renewable energy engineer. Erwin's senior schedule included AP classes in physics, calculus, and Spanish. He and I have nothing in common. He was active in the National Honor Society as well as stunt. In addition to varsity tennis, serving as captain for three years, he managed girls' tennis, worked 15 hours a week, and held a position as Sunday School teacher at a nearby church. Erwin plans to also attend University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign and will pursue a career in civil engineering. Abraham Ganima? Did I do that right? Abraham has a class rank of four. He seems to be a real team player: golf team, volleyball team, FTC robotics team, math team, and chess team. When not attending his AP classes or fulfilling his various team obligations, Abraham served as a mentor for freshmen at school and was active in his church. Currently accepted at Cornell, Abraham is waiting to hear from Stanford in hopes of attending there and pursuing the field of computer science. Did you hear anything?
I didn't hear anything.
Ah, Cornell. Abraham's going to Cornell. Not bad. Alexandra has made the honor roll for three years running and the National Honor Society for the last two years. Her extracurricular activities include soccer, international dance, art club, Student Council, and Polish club. She has volunteered at Sunrise Assisted Living, a Safe Haven Homeless Shelter, and for the Salvation Army, to name a few. She will continue to strive for excellence as she attends Elmhurst College in hopes of pursuing a career in nursing. Congratulations. Best of luck. We are delighted to have you guys represent Wood Dale as you go out in the world.
Ed Buck, still at Edison Trail?
Right now, Mr. Sizbarski.
Bird dogs be here, right?
because they're fabulous. From Fenton, Benjamin Wolfe. In addition to his class schedule, Benjamin has been in wrestling and cross-country. He was active in swing choir, the fall play, and a musical production during several years. His community and service includes Peer Jury and Kids Can't Buy 'Em Here, run by the Wood Dale Police. Benjamin took metals class in senior year and discovered an aptitude and passion for welding. He plans to attend College of DePage to acquire an associate's degree in welding towards a career in welding or metal fabricating. Irving Vergon. Irving was active in BEAT Environmental Club and has completed courses in woods, metals, and film study, but his interests lie in his courses in autos, and it is this area of study which he intends to pursue at College of DePage. He hopes to achieve a career in the automotive field. Also from Fenton, Renee Wesley. Renee has been a National Honor Society member for three years. Some of her time senior year has been devoted to such studies as fitness and nutrition, preschool, and she did a career internship at this time. These pursuits will serve her well as she goes to Elmhurst College to study nursing in hopes of a career as an emergency room nurse. In addition, Renee has managed to complete an amazing 1,062 hours of community service. Sorry, Eugene, she is the face of Wood Dale. And from Lake Park High School, Alec Tau. A member of the honor roll and the varsity bowling team, Alec has also participated in Stand for the Silent, an anti-bowling campaign. Alec has found a great deal of satisfaction in the Sister Cities program. After being introduced to the program in Wood Dale, he found the interaction with foreign countries satisfying and joined the French exchange at school. He plans to go on to Illinois State University, study business, marketing, and accounting, and participate on their bowling team.
Before I continue, Alex, I apologize. I should have had you come by the council. I know they want to shake your hand, and I didn't ask you to do that. If you could please do that. Thank you.
Whatever side you want to start on.
Do we have anybody else who wishes to address the council this evening before I continue with the agenda?
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to the council this evening. This is not on my piece of paper, and I wasn't expecting to say this, but looking at this group of youth, the future looks bright.
Can I have your name, please?
My name is Julie Zabel, and I've worked as Wood Dale dispatcher for 26 years and have been a Wood Dale resident for most of my 53 years. During my career as a Wood Dale dispatcher, I have taken pride in serving this community and the city council. But I'm here tonight to talk to you about something that I'm concerned about, and that's the city's consideration of eliminating the jobs of the Wood Dale dispatchers. As dispatchers, we are dedicated to serving this community. When a resident has a problem and needs emergency assistance, we are the first point of contact around the clock. When business owners find themselves in critical situations, once again, we are the first point of contact. We know the community that we serve, and we value that connection. We all recognize that the state is threatening to cut funding for the city if they don't consolidate services. So, my question to you, as members of the city council, is what value do you place on our work, what we have done for you the past years? What have we proven is our contribution to protecting public safety? I stand firm with my colleagues, who could not be here this evening, and with concerned residents of Wood Dale, in urging the city council to reconsider the consolidation of the dispatch services when voting. And please, when doing so, show concern for those dedicated, nationally accredited dispatchers that could possibly be out of work. Stand up for the Wood Dale community and for public safety. Please take a moment and consider the repercussions of your vote on the community and the officers who serve and protect you. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Laura Warsba. I've been with Dispatch since July of 2004. As Julie mentioned, I just wanted to bring it to your attention, we have two dispatchers who have been there for 26 years. They are very close to retirement, but cannot quite reach it. They need a little bit more time. I'm just asking you to postpone this for just a little bit so they can finally grasp that retirement that they've been dedicated to Wood Dale. I know that we are in the budget for this year. Just let us ride out this year, and then you can go to consolidation for the budget next year. I know the dispatchers have worked very hard. I know a couple, for sure, have made sure that some of the senior citizens in our town have food for them to eat. They've gone to grocery stores on their own time and made sure that there was fresh produce in the refrigerator so they can eat. We are familiar with the citizens. We give them personal service that consolidated dispatch would not be able to give them. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else? Did you? Okay. Next, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Three items. First and foremost, I think I actually mentioned this during the last manager's report, but I want to reiterate to the council, the residents at home, you will start to see activity, construction activity, in the intersection of Wood Dale Road and Irving Park Road for the long anticipated and awaited safety improvement project. You'll likely start to see construction equipment gathering, trucks in and out of the area, workers, flags, things of that nature. We are, this week, our first piece of public outreach has gone out to the residents in the immediate vicinity and businesses in the immediate vicinity. We did do some door-to-door work. HR Green did some door-to-door work today, I believe. And there'll be more public outreach pieces coming. There'll also be a special section of the website dedicated to this, as well as, you know, you can always call City Hall for more information. There'll be a pre-con meeting. After that pre-con meeting, we'll know a lot more of the details, timelines, and whatnot. That detailed, that detailed meeting will be the week of June 22nd. That'll be the week of the pre-con meeting. So, after that meeting, you'll see even more activity in the area, and we'll get that information out to those that are affected in the immediate area. Second item, or does anybody have any questions on the safety improvement? Second item, for those of you who missed the parade or would just like to watch it again, it's now airing on YouTube anytime you want to watch it, and on Channel 6 and 99, 4 p.m. daily. The last item, the council had showed an interest in improving the city's website for online payments. Recently, we did improve that just this week, and people can now go online on our site and pay tickets and other various items that weren't accessible before, and that is now active as of this week. So, that's good news.
Alderman Riley Wesley?
Mr. Manager, the sign for the Prairie Fest?
Go ahead.
Could we, instead of facing it this way on Wood Dale Road, could we face it this way so when traffic goes by that you could see the sign, instead of reading the sign?
Not, not, not that particular sign, because I don't think it's double-sided, but we could make it double-sided?
Yeah.
We can do something, sure.
Because if I turn to see the sign, I'm going to hit a squad car or something. So, I don't want to do that.
That concludes my report.
And also, and also the movie in the park, I know that's not our responsibility. It's the park district's, right?
Well, it's a joint program, but they're a majority.
Well, maybe the same thing on their sign, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do need to make one more comment. Bussy Woods Dam project is going out to bid, and should be starting construction in August, and they hope to be done by Thanksgiving. And as of this morning, it's possible that the county will be operating the gates approximately six inches earlier than they have been. Two days ago, there wasn't anything when I was sitting there at the meeting. I asked this morning. It's not confirmed, but we've heard that there was some discussion, so it might be happening. The manager will work on getting confirmation. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
What gate are we talking about, Bussy Woods?
No, our reservoir. Our reservoir, six inches sooner. So, what, we're at 676 now? 675.6? Or, we haven't, it's not confirmed, you know, but that's what we've heard. We just want to, we will get a confirmation, just in case anybody hears a rumor or something. But I know Tuesday, I was at the county stormwater meeting, and there was nothing on it, and this morning, all of a sudden, there's something on it. So, we just want to get that confirmed. Mr. Murmas?
And just for the, for the new council members, this has been a longstanding ask for the city to the county. They've come out here many times. The mayor's been working on this hard. Staff's been working on this hard. I know Aldermen have attended meetings and tried to get the county to change their stance on this, and it finally looks like we're making some progress here. So, if it was official, I'm sure the mayor would have streamers and balloons. It is important. We do get a lot of calls on this. It saves the infrastructure in Ward 2 from a lot of unnecessarily, unnecessary wear and tear. So, we are all excited about this. So... Ward 4 as well, from unnecessary wear and tear.
Aye. Consent agenda, since we only have one item, we will need a motion to approve the item in ordinance ascertaining the prevailing rate of wages for laborers, workmen, and mechanics employed in the public works of the city of Wood Dale.
Make the motion.
Second. Any questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Masina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Planning and zoning, Alderman Catalano?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Public health and safety?
Mayor, I have--
Eugene Wesley, sorry.
See? I have one report. Resolution approving intergovernmental agreement for the dispatch service.
Is that your motion?
That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Masina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizbarski?
No.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
That's in my report, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Public Works, Alderman Woods?
I have three reports, Mayor. First is a resolution seeking to approve a permanent utility easement to the Main Street light cable and conduit at 320 South Cedar. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Masina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizbarski?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
Next is a resolution seeking to approve a temporary construction easement to provide access to 320 South Cedar to install streetlight cable. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Roll call. Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sartino?
Yes.
Alderman Sibarski?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
Next is approval for the city of Wood Dale to execute a cost participation letter to the tollway authority for the Wood Dale Road Bridge project. That is my motion.
Do I have a second? Motion and second?
Second.
Alderman Sibarski. Do we have any questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sartino?
Yes.
Alderman Sibarski?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
That is the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance Administration, Alderman Jacob.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Under other business, O'Hair Noise Group... Alderman Jacob, go ahead.
Couple of things. We are getting some temporary relief. There is runway 10L, 28R, has some nighttime construction for lighting going on, so we are getting a little temporary relief with that. Our group, the O'Hair Noise Group, is going to be at the upcoming Prairie Fest, which is July 30th to August 2nd. We will also be at National Night Out, which is August 4th. And the complaints in March were 352,846. Wood Dale was 35,000 of those from 893 different homes. So people are starting to get more active in complaining, which is what we've been asking. Thank you.
Thank you. And Stormwater Commission, Alderman Jacob.
Just one item here. June 13th, we are going to have our river sweep from 9 to 12. There's going to be some more details to come soon.
Thank you. Next, approval of list of bills, June 4th. Alderman Jacob.
I make a motion to approve the list of bills, June 4th, 2015, $592,669.75.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any questions on the bills?
I'm not signing them.
No questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sartino?
Yes.
Alderman Sibarski?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. We do the executive session this evening for review of official minutes and collective bargaining. I need a motion to adjourn into executive session. Motion and second, all in favor? Aye. opposed or adjourned into executive?